Comments from the public? You have any?
Oh, you know what? Let me try this.
Presentations and discussions of interest of the committee, Chartwell's contract.
Okay, so I'm happy to share with that. So I sent the committee the contract with provisions that we did mention, that I did mention on, I think it, both are on page seven, I believe. One provision is to allow for the use of funds to go towards locally sourced foods and products. I think that is 7.2.7, if you see that in the contract.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, so Pauline has joined us. Pauline, if you can unmute yourself while you're not speaking.
That would be good.
Okay, so, so that is the one provision that we were talking about in order to make sure that Linda is able to get what she needs from our local farms and our local food producers. I think that we certainly will make sure that she is supported to be able to do that and perhaps even have, try to have a meeting with some of the local farms just to see what they're, what's possible for them and what they can do and if whether or not we can create a partnership and have an agreement with them around how we can get those materials to our food service cafeterias. The other provision that is in the contract is, I believe, 8.1, and that is around an advisory committee. So this advisory committee can be made up of who we desire, but it should be an advisory committee that meets and works with Linda and with Chartwell's to make decisions around menus, to make decisions around product usage, around what feedback we're getting from students and parents. So I think that that is going to be a very helpful and very important body that can really work with Chartwell's and work with Linda so that we know what we're hearing, we know what we, what the consensus is from the students who are eating lunch every day. So those are the things that I think we can really put into place and make sure that Chartwell's is holding up to their end of the contract and the bargain. So I do feel that, I know that we have Linda Peterson here today, and if you would like, through the chair, I know she might like to address the committee or at least answer questions, it's up to you. But certainly she's here at your disposal to be able to speak to anything in particular.
Linda, do you have any thoughts on the contract?
Well, I haven't read the contract, first of all, but I just wrote down the two comments that you made on page seven and 801. That's fine with me. What I've done after the meeting of February 1st, when I collected all your comments and everything, would be to, I called Sid Wainer. Okay, their local suppliers would be May to October, and I'm on that list, always have been on that list. The only thing I have personally got local for the program for this year and previous years would be apples. And they search farms local to them would be 150 miles away from Nantucket. Okay, that's their local, but you want Nantucket local. I understand that, okay? That's the only thing on that.
Is it, if I may, through the chair, is it possible to work with Chartwell's to make sure we can buy local, I mean literally local from Nantucket? Or is it...
Oh, yeah. How that used to work was before the pandemic. Sorry, I have a little sore throat. We sustain, I met with Sustainable, and I gave them a list of the vegetables and salads that I would need throughout the day and the quantity with Caitlin. Caitlin has gone on to another adventure, and there's a new girl named Ella that I need to have a meeting with. Sustainable would grant write for so much dollars, however, they would do the grant writing and receive the money. And if Bartlett Farm, for an example, was selling fresh tomatoes at $4 and Sid Wainers had it for $2, the grant money would come to me to make it $4. See, so that would kind of be a better product, and they help me and the kids get better, better product. Because of the COVID-19, we haven't really done much with the farm or the growing season, only my local apples. I do put out a salad every day, some sort of salad. Whether the kids eat it or not, I don't know behind, you know, I'm in the kitchen. I have gone and researched the trash cans with gloves on, and they really are not eating the vegetables. They're throwing away apples, they're throwing away milk. I really wish they would just take a little time and at least try it, because every day it's a different product in the bag. And then moving forward for next year, we will open up the line and they will be able to have their salad, because they're looking at it and it's much better than being in a container. The other piece to this, Department of Defense, last February, I called the D U S, the D U E, and I said, what is this program all about? Because before, I could never get fruits and vegetables. So I talked to a gentleman. He said, Linda, the problem is, is getting you here. So he told me to call him back this February, which I did. So I took some of my entitlement money. I only did $1,500 because it's only spring and fall, and I don't know how it's going to get here, and I didn't want to lose my entitlement money, which I could use for beef, turkey, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm going to give it a chance and see how it comes. So I'm waiting for an answer for him to get the buy-in power, what he has to offer, then we can get it here. But then again, that is going to be off-island, fresh. I don't know the quality. I wanted to give it a chance, basically. Chartwell's has another program that is called flash-frozen. That would come from Rhode Island in Connecticut. So you're actually getting like broccoli rob. And it's, like I said, flash, and then it comes in frozen, and then we saute it, and we put other, we can put tomatoes with it and things like that. I'd like to see that happen again. And also, I think if I'm fully staffed, I could do some marketing, like start at each school and cook something or show them a salad, show them, try me, and then have some sort of survey, like, I like it, I don't like it. I've done that with Caitlin at the elementary. It was icky, or I loved it, you know, and we did a survey on that. But at least the kids tried it. That's about it on the fruit and vegetables that I've done last year and this year.
Who, and Linda, I taught here in the very late 90s, you probably remember.
I remember you, I've been here that long.
And I, yeah, it's been a long time. And, you know, the quality of food was a lot different then. It was, I mean, I still think about the tuna fish sandwiches that I used to get every day.
Thank you.
They were amazing. And so I, and I know that it is different times, but what, what, who was the food service then?
When you were here, I was.
It was, well...
And, and we weren't Chartwell's.
Right. Was there, and what happened after that? So I was, that was my last year then, it was 2002, and then I was back for another five years. Was that, who was here previously before Chartwell's?
Before Chartwell's? I think Mrs. Chivo was here. Yeah, Mrs. Chivo. It went from Mrs. Chivo to Chartwell's for a couple of years, I think, what, maybe eight, nine years? And then we went town, and then we went back to Chartwell's.
So in, and I may be asking questions that everybody else knows the answer to, but when it was you, the quality was amazing, and I'm, it really was.
Well, thank you.
So why did that shift? And this is probably a question that everybody else but me knows.
Well, USDA has different recipes than the management company. That's the only thing I can think of. And times are different. We have more mandates now. It's going to be so much salt, so much mayonnaise, low-fat this. I don't really care for low-fat, but if the, I have to coordinate the recipe, the product and the recipe to comply with the state to get the reimbursement, because they're going to look at that. When they audit me, they're going to say, where's your recipes? Where's your label? Where's your food? And I have to have all that ready for them when they come in for a state audit.
Wow.
So if I, before with your tuna, it was probably, it wasn't as strict as it is now. Like, we had white pasta way back then. Then George Bush, he decided to do the movement in the school. He wanted whole grain. So I weaned everybody off onto whole wheat, whole wheat pasta. How I did that was I gave them a little bit of both, then finally, I, you know, like, and then just cut it. And that's how that went. But the mandates are very high, and I believe we have to use less sodium next year, too.
Thank you. That's, it's unfortunate that, because I think even Dr. Avery would say a lot of, you know, that they're not nutritionists.
Well, for me, I like to scratch cook. I like to take, well, like you do, you have your pasta sauce at home. You take a little this and this, 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 and you make a sauce. You know, I just can't just open up a can that's already prepared. It's not me. And I do, I do some things a little better.
Well, also, back then, we had potato chips and Coke.
We had potato chips, we had Coke, we had Life Savers. Mr. Bush, President Bush wanted it out. We got rid of the vending machines. Then there was a time where we weren't selling much on the à la carte or chips and things because parents were not wanting it. And I wouldn't want to go with low-fat chips, so I avoided selling chips all along. We used to have big cookies like this way back in the day when... Now we have little ones like this, because it's all goes by calorie, by salt, by whole grain. Everything's going to be 100% whole grain. I haven't served white bread. I haven't even looked at white bread other than the Stop and Shop, but I can't serve anything white.
Is there a way that we can, I mean, honestly, I think when the food was better, and yes, there, kids, I know, I'm sure you can attest that, I mean, I know my son drinks his Red Bull, and that's some kind of thing that I buy or serve in my home. So they're going to get it somewhere. I mean, I would rather have healthy offerings and then still have the chips and things, because they're going to buy it anyway.
True. I did have a nice à la carte, I have a nice rack with fat-free, gluten-free, like Smart Food is gluten-free. I had different varieties of chips, sun chips, less salt, forays, and then I had 100% fruit snacks at the register. I had the little cookies. So I was selling à la carte items. But when you talk about à la carte items, it could be two slices of pizza. It could be a main meal and an extra meal would give a high school kid nice. What they're doing now is they want two slices of pizza and nothing more. It just depends on their mood or the times.
Well, I do remember Mrs. Chivo's food. And I, I know what you're talking about when they ask you for your recipe, because I'm sure how you were raised to cook, you never had a recipe. It was a pinch of this, dash of this, mix it in like this. And I'm sorry, did you hear that? Some of those old, like Mrs. Chivo used to make sloppy joes, and the line was out the door for those things. And I get it. I guess what my question to you, and thank you so, I'm sorry, thank you so very much for the hard work that you have done. And I can't imagine when you factor in how you've done prior to COVID, putting that in there, how much heart it's been, so thank you so very much. I've called you multiple times when I needed something, you always are. And the phone never rang twice when I called you. So thank you for that as well. So my question would be, when you talk about getting apples from, and what you cross the bridge or wherever you get your apples, how hard would it be to get any kind of greens or things like that from the local sustainable farms on Nantucket? And what kind of hoops does that farm have to jump through to be mandated to get the food to us? And on top of that, do you have to go get it even though you're short-staffed? Or does the farm bring it to you?
No, the farm will not make deliveries to me. I worked at the Nantucket Hotel, and I used to go get the tomatoes for the chef.
So you're short-staffed, so you have to find someone in your staff to go get those greens, which you can't even do, because you're short-staffed enough as I'm hearing through the grapevine.
I was in process with Caitlin to, we have, Bartlett Farm gave us 700 pounds of tomatoes before they wanted to glean. So they gleaned, brought them to me, then another team would come and help me prep and cook them, right? Then we put them in huge five-gallon chugs, and I made pasta sauce for pretty much all but two, two or three months for each school out of that. So all that came from them, and it was better tasting.
Of course.
Because Mrs. Chivo taught me well, you know?
And I want to ask another question. And we know that how hard it is to get the food to you, right?
Okay, I was, I'm sorry, I meant to say that. So we have the glean team, then we have the other team, then we have another team that were willing to drop it off.
Okay, that's fine. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, it's the seniors who are allowed to leave campus to go get food, correct?
Correct, but I have like maybe 30 or 40 seniors still stay here.
Okay, but is it seniors, Beth?
Yes.
Or Dr. Hal?
Yes, seniors.
So seniors can leave. Now, the seniors go to the boathouse, seniors go to commies, seniors go to Stop and Shop. Has anyone thought about seeing if some of these food trucks could come here, sit around our campus, give us back a cut and tell them what they need to serve?
Well, actually, I think you would be going against the school lunch program. I don't think the state would allow any food trucks on-site after school. They can have ice cream parlor.
So the student doesn't allow food trucks on any campus?
That is correct.
During the school day?
During the school day.
Only that's only during COVID, Patrick was allowed to do that. That was to you as well, right?
The only reason why Patrick and I teamed up was food safety, because meals were being remotely picked up outside.
So kids are allowed to leave the campus, go down, eat the rest of food they could get. They stayed on campus, they got better food.
It's the same situation with any child that brings their own lunch to school. They can bring whatever they like. So whatever is served in the schools has to follow the regulations.
Thank you very much, Linda, for all you did.
Sure, you're welcome.
Has that always been the case, that it was so federally mandated and managed?
It is so in the last five years, I would say, since, since I came back, yeah. It's like, every day it has to have so much ounces of this, whole grain of fruit, protein, the vegetable, a salad. Everything has to fall within that formula. If you remember back on February 1st, we showed you a chart where it had green dots on it. So we plug it in. What I think I would like to serve, because I have the product on hand, I have to go day by day, then I have to go by the weekly, make sure that I have, when the weekly comes up and I only have 87 whole grain, I got to go back to the daily and read and find out where my whole, where I'm missing. It could have been, I could have chosen the number white pizza crust. It's usually white pizza crust. It's one, it's ending in four instead of five. What I need is number five, and it's a typo error. So I would find my errors in that.
And they supply, so Chartwell supplies those pre-made crusts and all those sorts of things?
Actually, that comes from Gordon. It's their formula, it's a whole grain olive oil fleck seed sheet that comes in, and we have a pizza oven. We make our own sauce, we shred our own cheese, and we cook them. Most, most of the food is cooked, except for a chicken patty that comes in, as you know, is Tyson. That's the only thing that I would call a TS, you know?
I have one more question. Where is the unopened, like, and he has so much of these, prior to COVID, if there was like, if part of your food was unopened and it was a milk or it was a cheese stick, does that still exist? When the kids get their bag of lunch, and if so, if there's unopened food, does that go to the food pantry or does that disperse or does that go right into the...
Open food?
No. Like, if you go to the school and the kid will get the lunch, he'll get a milk, and he'll get this, he'll get that, and they won't touch it.
Oh, once it leaves my door, I can't take it back.
No, does it go, is it dispersed to the food pantry, unopened milk or anything like that? Or does that just toss in the garbage?
Most likely, it would go in the garbage, but we encourage them, if they'd like to bring it back to their room. I encourage the kids to take the cheese stick home or the apple, but you're talking time and temperature. Anything over two hours out of refrigeration is a danger zone. So if you had lunch at 11 and you go home at 3, that's way too long to hold on to that milk, unless you have a refrigerator in a classroom.
Okay, then you should probably stop doing that then, because some of that stuff is like, I'm going to stop there.
No, it is, it's funny, it's funny being wasted, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Is there more?
I have no questions.
Because I had you in school.
Yes, I do miss those turkey sandwiches.
Yeah. Yeah, the mandates are different. If I had, if I had a full staff, I would do a sandwich bar made to order. It took two of us and we just, the kids line up, and that would be a little more popular.
How many employees are you on the staff right now?
Well, today, or every, or just in general. I'm supposed to have 12, and I usually am working with seven or eight. But I can work with nine, but if I have one out, like today, I had one out of N I S, so I took one girl from N E S and flipped her over there, helped prep and deliver, and then kept two there. And then we had one short here, because she called and said that I still put out lunch. We put out 900 today.
Now, when NHS, CPS, N I S, N E S, back before I was on the school committee, when they needed a sub, they called. Now, when you need someone to fill in your department, are you able to call, we bring somebody to help you out? Or, A, they have to be core certified, yes, but are you allowed to call someone and say, listen, I, we need a sub in the cafeteria today. You worked with us prior, can you come in and just fill in on the line? Are you allowed to do that?
I had a sub, but she retired.
Well, I'm saying that, gonna, gonna...
I understand that, but they would have to, they would have to be on my payroll.
As a substitute teacher, I wasn't on anyone's payroll. I just came in and you filled out a form. You can't do the same thing as a substitute TA, it's not the same as a substitute.
No, they would have to apply, apply online per position for a substitute.
Right, but it would be the same thing as applying, Logan, would that be correct? It's different to work in a caf, because it's food related?
Because it's a food service provider, so it's contractually done through Chartwell's.
Question answered. But that might be something you might want to put out there.
I have...
Am I that guy? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I have advertised on our menu, I said, if you like the part-time job on the menu. I also have put it in the I and M for the month of, last week in November through the end of January. The problem is, is people, I have had good people apply for the job, but when I tell them it's only 30 hours, 32, not year-round, 186 days, they're all looking for 40 hours and benefits and more money per hour. So I've had, I've called up restaurant friends and say, hey, you got the day off? But they would have, you know, come in here and apply for a substitute. They would be great.
I just, I didn't know. You and Logan both answered my question, I just thought you'd put it out there.
Sure.
Publicly, since we're on TV, I think we are.
If I may, I believe that Pauline has some questions, so Pauline, you can unmute yourself.
Hi, everybody. So a couple of things, I'm sorry I can't be there in person. Linda, can I ask, I've been trying, I've looked on the contract and I can't find where we had talked about if we needed to make a substitution for something because it wasn't available. Who has the, who has the final say on what that substitution is? And the reason I'm asking is because, and I don't know if you saw the video, but I was sent the video of the, it was called a chicken pate or chicken breast, but it was in fact some kind of ground something. And it, when you took the breast out, it rolled up into a ball with a soft breast. And that's where most of my concerns are, is with the substitutions or the meats that we're getting for our kids. So can you just tell me how we can, how you suggest we can make sure that you are in control of what is being substituted and not a purveyor?
Yeah, we don't really get a lot of food substitutes. We did on that particular chicken at that particular, that one time, and I already filed a complaint against that. As a matter of fact, I requested my money back, because I have 10 cases sitting in N E S freezer, because the freezer at N E S would be my hub, and we would transfer to the product to both schools. So I've already put in a recall on that, and I was upset that it actually went out without having a better judgment. So I have already discussed that after February 1st. In other words, if you're not going to eat it, you're not going to serve it. And most of the substitute are with paper products, but that was the only thing I saw, Ms. Polly, was the chicken.
Okay, thank, thank you, Linda. So it looks like in this contract, we can't take donated foods other than salads and vegetables I'm seeing here. So is that something new for the contract, Beth?
I believe it is pretty standard and has been in the contract before. I would have to look back at last year's, the last contract that we had to see whether it was the same. I would say for, in preparation of this contract, most everything rolled over, so.
Okay, okay. And then you were talking about the left go for food, Linda. Let's, let's just take the fruit, for instance. I know Tom puts out at the high school a bucket to the state, you know, put your fruit in here, and it doesn't always get in there, it goes in the trash. But if, if we collected enough apples, let's say, is there anything to stop us from having somebody take those apples and cook them up and make some fresh crumble for the next day for the kids? Is that, and I understand it takes manpower, so that it could be an issue, but other than the manpower of the person that could do that, is that, is that something that we could do with fruits that would not be eaten?
Then again, I, that's a health department decision, because I have a shared policy that I sign with the health department, that the children can take and share it. But as far as actually someone removing the whole bit, the whole ball and cooking it, I personally can't bring it back in the kitchen. Once it leaves my kitchen, it leaves my kitchen. But if someone, like a parent or a teacher, says, oh, I'll make... But if someone like a parent or a teacher says, oh, I'll make crumble for the kids, she can do that. I just can't.
Got it. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Sure.
I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Uh, all right, so at this point, if you, if there are no other questions in the school committee, um, I believe we can vote.
I, I have one more question. Um, the advisory part of it, before we vote on this, do you have to assign those advisory people to that?
No, we can, we can assign it when the contract starts in July.
Is this the first time there's been an advisory committee with Chartwells?
Um, I, I, I would need to research that to find out if there has been an advisory committee, um, prior to, um, I believe there has. I know there's a wellness committee, um, but I don't know if there's been, if that's been separated or it's the same. I believe it's the same.
Okay, thank you very much.
It was a little larger.
Separate.
Separate, okay, so, uh, so we need to bring back the, the advisory committee. I do have one additional question before this goes to vote. We, there are no other options on the table unless correct?
The only thing I also would like to add would be because my, my staff only works 32 hours, they're all eligible for benefits, but only three take it because they're either single or they don't have any medical benefits or anything like that with, um, any other company or whatnot. There's only three out of the nine that work for me have benefits. Just thought I'd add that in.
Can I repeat that again?
Yeah, I don't understand the question.
I, I don't mind sharing. So, um, Linda said that of the 12, of the, um, employees that she has, of the nine that are regularly there, only three of them actually take advantage of the benefits package that's, that is provided to them. Uh, others have either other health insurance or other, um, other supports, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Cause that was a question, I wanted to add that, because that was a question that Pauline had brought up February 1st. So I just wanted to add that.
Have we had a discussion?
Um, no, sir.
No.
Seems like an easy decision. Can I have a motion to accept the Chartwell contract with modifications?
They make a motion to accept the Chartwell contract with modifications.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, I think it would be interesting if the school committee had one meal, let's say one meal a month. And just see what we think. I mean, it's one way to keep track of it.
Okay, you go first.
Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, please, with a roll call vote, as we have one remote participant.
Can you do a roll, roll call?
Okay, let's have a roll call.
Okay. I go yes?
Aye.
Aye. Pauline?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we'll adjourn to our workshop session, the district report.